Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Los Angeles County Board of County Commissioners' meeting. It is now one o four. I want to call this meeting to your Commissioner Trump. Would you please make an appointment?
We ask you guys to stay with our attention. We have the problem that the walls are overwhelming to be present in our cars and goings, in our moments of joy and in our moments of sorrow until you come again. Amen. Commissioner Lucas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the presidency of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me make a... Those who are...
Commissioner Reson, here. Commissioner Vasquez, here. Commissioner Pies, here.
Who will be on the agenda? Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Commissioner.
Okay.
We will watch. I go for the agenda. Commissioner Reson, this?
Yes.
Commissioner Vasquez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pies, this?
Yes. Item two eight, Trinidad Trail and Veblo Mission. At this point in time, I want to welcome all of you to the Los Angeles County Board of Commissioners' meeting. And basically, oh, there's more coming in. And for those of you on Zoom, we would like to ask you, if you're not speaking, to keep your mics muted, please. That would be very appreciated. And we're going to have a pretty good discussion. Welcome to all of you. And at this point in time, Mayor Rico, you wanted to open up with some other things?
Chairman Wallace and members of the commission and audience. Here today, like I said, I know there are two items that we have to talk about. Do you want me to speak individually for the first one and then talk later on the second one? Or do you want me to address the Biden drive, which would give you prefer?
At your preference. I mean, we were at your convenience next to you.
I know the first item that's on there is the Trail to the Peak. And I just want to mention that this discussion has been going around for some time now. And I really believe that really today is just really is not the time to talk about this per se. Because the master plan has not been released yet to... That is going to be done next Monday, the eleventh, where people will be able to be allowed to address any questions or changes or thoughts they might have. So there aren't any decisions that we really can make today. There's really nothing. First of all, we don't know whether CPW will actually allow four A Trail to the Peak to take place.
You're speaking of the TPR?
CPR is...
Correct.
The Trail to the Peak. So we really don't know at what point or what points that... No, they're even going to allow the trail to get to the peak. And matter of fact, I've had a conversation with Commissioner Has about this, and he's in agreement with me. Until we get close to that conversation with CPW, after the master plan is released, you know, we've seen the plans, we've seen different details as to how to get to the peak. Whether they'll work or not, I don't know. We only know until we actually can engage with CPW to say, you know, this is okay, this is okay. No. You know, we have to go along with what CPW has to say. As far as the multi-modal project, where the building proposed for the multi-modal project ended up brought to the city's attention a couple of weeks ago. So I did, I went to the CPR, the TPR meeting a couple of weeks ago, and you were all over in that thing. And basically, what they told us is that they will not work there. It will not work in the place that is proposed. There's not enough space, and they're not willing to even accept a proposal to go into that space at all. So what's going to have to happen is that we are going to either have to find another place where we go or kill the project. I'm not willing to kill the project. I'm willing to look another avenue and other places where we can actually have a multi-modal. Because I truly believe that we do need one in town. So I think that as far as the one that, the proposal that's on the table right now is dead. So that is going to... She, when I first spoke up, she arrived right way shopping down. You guys are there. I talked to Wendy Pettit, I think it was her name, and she was well aware already of the proposal. And she said it will not work there. So she said, when you guys are ready, find a different place, we will come down and we will help you in design, to test place work, how to get there, how it's going to work. Because personally, I've been talking with Mr. Bell a lot, and we're looking not only at possibly a multimodal, but possibly a wilding center. Because as you know, what happened to the wilding center many years ago was taken away from us when the bypass and trade down was taken, was redone. So at that time, all of the, I mean, a lot of the traffic that was going through just didn't hurt. And it's coming back a little at a time, but we still don't have an ideal egress and ingress off and highly. So thanks. And I really believe that today, a lot of this discussion, I really don't know at this point in time.
And my... Wouldn't they, Mrs. Pettit, I think it was her name, what she did say was that the money that was allocated for the 10-year plan of projects was already allocated. Another project, the 10-year plan.
Yeah, she did say that, you know, like another year or two that we could go back. And I'm not sure if it's...
And look for additional...
One of the other comments that came out of the meeting, I personally asked about the reallocation of funds, line item appropriation for the multi-modal stations. What happened with the big line item that they received as a state? How much of that's going to be transferred to local multi-modal projects? And of course, the recommendation was we'll get back with you. We want to see, one of my questions was, can we see a spreadsheet? What's been allocated, what's been appropriated, and what year of that 10-year the project is going to take place on? But, and again, reminding all of you, first of all, thank you for being here. And today, even as Board of County Commissioners, we do not have the authority to make a decision on any items. We're here to take all the feedback, and if we needed to make a decision, definitely we'll bring that back as a line item to a regular Board of County Commissioners meeting. So at this point in time, I want to open up the floor for anyone that may be interested in speaking.
One last thing I wanted to say, you know, we do know that we do have that $288,000 from the warming shelter. That still is in place, and that is still moving forward for the warming shelter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Chairman Fumey, then you all were coming today. The whole purpose of this is to have a group meeting dialogue regarding some of these projects that are always in the rumor mill out there in our community. So Board, Mr. Doran Camp said, let's put everybody in the same rooms to see where we're at, see what everybody's talking about, to have some good dialogue on some of these projects. And everybody's got some really neat ideas moving forward. So thank you all for coming. And I look forward to the dialogue that's in today.
And we got a special paper actually approached to set up the motion, so this will...
And so we have so many projects that are really works right now, you know, trade downs are... And the confusion of which projects with which, like talking about one trail here and the other trail over there. This is a city project. What's going on here? So it's clarification on our behalf also.
You know, I think there are actually three different grants out there, right? One's the Trail to the Peak, you know, there's two others. And I think those need to be defined so that everybody understands what they're supposed to do. Some here in... Yes, Michael, please come up to the mic and introduce yourself.
I'm Si Michaels. Thank you, everybody, for being here, city, county, all working together. My view on the trail is, I didn't, I wasn't even aware that there was a certain trail that was going into the state park in a certain area. It's just for economic development and for the downtown area for Trinidad. If we could do like, in the future, if you think about the marketing capabilities of downtown Trinidad and the economic viability of that by doing hashtag Appalachian Trail, hashtag Oregon Trail, hashtag Trinidad Trail. We, I am in no way saying a trail should go a certain way for a certain amount and a certain time. Many communities in the state of Colorado have bonded state parks and national parks with their downtown area to help grow that area for economic development and for tourism. You know, with the people hearing more now about outdoor recreation than ever before, with our college that has outdoor programs, with so many things. If you visualize Commercial Street, at the end of Commercial Street, when it starts bending, there's old stairs there that happened from an old trail. And people have all their views on all the ways the trail should go. I'm just asking for us to, personally, as a residential person here, I'm just asking that we bond in the city and county and talk about that we would like to have a trail together. And let's get money together or apply for funds so that we can do a study to see how that works. Just that itself, with people in outdoor recreation coming to Trinidad, it will be exciting for everybody. People are not going to come down and park and stay downtown and then walk all the way up Semipay Trail, all the way to the park, and then go all the way up to Fisher's Peak. At whatever point, and it's going to be years where Fisher's Peak, you can reach to the top. But it's going to be such an exciting draw for Trinidad. People want to go up and experience Fisher's Peak like they did in the years when Trinidad was booming in the 1880s and 90s. And we forget they had entertainment because there wasn't, there wasn't TV or any other stuff. They went straight up Commercial Street, straight to the top. And yeah, there's tons of trails out there right now. I don't know which is the right trail. I don't think anybody here knows what the right trail. I'm just asking for us to bond together as a community and say, hey, let's look for grant money and see which way is best. That would make everybody happy. The mountain is big.
Well, you, Mr. Michaels, thanks so much. I think you are, I can speak on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners. We understand the impact. And if I were still at the college, one of the things that when I was out there recruiting for Trinidad State, it was sell the outdoor recreation and the access to our community. So personally, I think the idea is that the conversation has been going, perhaps if you will, in different directions. But today gives us all an opportunity to hear from our community.
Absolutely. And our college, although it's Trinidad State College now, started out as the first junior college in the state of Colorado. It has programs already with outdoor recreation. What other better flag to help our family, our local college, than to have a program where there's a nationally known trail that people want to go? That's like the Boston Trail, you start out in town, and then at some point you get in the wilderness, whichever way you go. It's just a way to grow our town in a really healthy way.
And you know, also, anytime, we love to be at the table of all these conversations that we're going to have about these trails. We want to be able to have our input and help facilitate what's going to happen.
Absolutely.
And not be left until the 11th hour to, you know, to sign an agreement. We need to be at the table.
Right, absolutely. And the partnerships that I'm talking about sometimes is a little painful for me as someone who considers Trinidad my home. And I'm really pledged to making sure that I'm a good spirit and a good employer, and I try to back people that are doing good. It's like, let's not work together. It's a dream that's a good thing and has shown over and over and over again in small communities how great trails have been for the downtown areas. Let's just try to figure out what works for everybody and make us all one. And really be proud of a trail when you see it advertised in a national magazine and be it that's in one year or five years or 10 years or what that is. Just let's start working on it because that's the only way to get ahead, is to work on it as a group.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you on that.
Hello, Board of Commissioners, and I want to pull up this PowerPoint that we put together for this meeting. My name is Sal Pace, and I'm coming to Trinidad and Los Angeles County, Julie and Tony, for a lot of rallies out in this back part here fighting...
On the just like the trail rights.
Yep, yeah, exactly. And we come here only in the intention of working to help grow Los Angeles County and Trinidad and do it in a positive way. And all of these ideas are ideas that have been met with C-HOP and with Department of Natural Resources. A little bit about my background, you know, when I first was coming here to Los Angeles County was as a political director and campaign manager for Congressman John Salazar. And then I ran for the legislature and spent a couple of terms in the legislature, ran a bill specifically about Los Angeles County when I was there. And then I spent a couple of terms as a public campaign commissioner. And I, you know, I heard the mayor get up and essentially oppose everything we're about to say before we say it. And it comes a little bit as a surprise because we've been trying to reach out to the mayor and talk with him and city staff. Sometimes we're told we don't talk enough, sometimes we're told we reach out too much. So we never quite know what his balance is. But what this really is, is a grassroots coalition of folks who want to do some good things. And if people have concerns, it'd be great if they pick up the phone and they call us. And it's not just me or Si or Jay Chino, it's a lot of community folks as well who stepped up. And if there are hurdles, you as leaders, Mayor Rico, you as a leader and you as commissioners, we rely on you guys as leaders to help solve those hurdles. And if we hear something from CPW that there's a hurdle, we hear something from C-DOT there's a hurdle, just like any leader does, you fight for your community. And none of you guys represent any state agency, you represent the citizens of Los Angeles County and Trinidad. And that's why I know you guys are going to keep fighting for these great projects. And so these are controversial ideas. These ideas aren't, we're not talking about abortion clinics and trunk rallies. These aren't crazy divisive ideas. We're talking about trails and a multimodal center. I can't imagine why a mayor would not be so enthusiastic to support these. So it's a little bit of a surprise to show up and have the mayor speak against these projects. So a little bit of background, let me go through these slides here. The second slide here, a quick introduction. We sent you all a letter back in January, signed by a number of folks in the community and people care about the community. We reached out to Mr. Doran Camp, and he so graciously worked with our staff to set up this time for this work session. And this is a follow-up to this letter, and we appreciate the Los Angeles County Board of Commissioners being so amenable and good to work with. On the next slide is a photo of the depot hall that used to exist at the current location of the train stop. And what we're trying to do is visualize a future that connects us in Trinidad and Los Angeles County to our past and recreating a depot hall that can exist in that same location. Wendy Pettit, I'm not exactly sure what she said at the TPR meeting. I've been talking with the Transit and Rail Division, and they've been very supportive of this concept. I can put them on the phone. I know that the Region Two Director, Jeff... Do we have someone that wants to jump in? A concept of having a depot hall here in Trinidad. It's something that can be special and grand and beautiful that touches on the past here in Trinidad and Los Angeles County. One-stop shop for transit options, including bus stand service and front range rail service. Something that is compatible and consistent. Mayor Rico talked about the warming shelter. There will be an effort for a warming shelter because, you know, the depot hall, the multimodal center won't be open 24 hours a day. But sometimes people may come at night or with bad weather. And it makes sense to have a warming shelter, even if you have a multimodal center. And flipping ahead to the next slide. Currently, Colorado Springs and Veblo are undergoing stationary planning processes for front range passenger rail. And that's in, we're so excited to have Commissioner Luis Lopez serving on the new passenger rail district. And we're so grateful for all of Mayor Rico's tremendous work on the commission over the last five years. And so both of these stops between Denver and Trinidad are working on stationary planning as we speak. And if we flip ahead, currently, La Jolla is also working on a multimodal transit center located out there southwest chief stop. And as far as the 10-year plan, there is a recommendation by C-HOP for $4 million for La Jolla Multimodal Center. I do see that La Jolla City Manager Rick Klein is on. I don't know, Rick, if you have any interest in sharing what you've been doing in La Jolla. If not, you know, I can keep talking, it's up to you.
So Sal, I'll jump in. So the city of La Jolla, our effort has been to...
Yes, sir. We can see you. We can hear you.
Is anybody hearing me?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, yeah, okay, great. So yeah, with front range rail coming through and the city of La Jolla City Council wanted me to see about the public campaign to do since top to us chief, which we all have been part of. And we saved that train and then it's good. You know, so we're doing the multimodal. And one of the things that we're doing for is because we're going to have, hopefully have a crew train that now is ongoing right now from La Jolla to Veblo to Colorado Springs to... And just, we need better than what we have to do because we're a crew change for Amtrak. And we have a crew change for BNSF. And BNSF wants the full station. So we're going to build this, hopefully build this new station. And we're going for design money right now and hopefully we'll get that. But we want to make it more into just kind of what Sal was saying about the way Trinidad flows and stuff. But have some tourism type stuff and give people a reason to come back to our towns. You know, I wish we could connect ours to our train, but we won't be able to do that. But this has been kind of an accumulation of all that with city south coast chief man who had a great front range rail. So in Colorado, we have a unique opportunity to be a part of something bigger. And if we want to bounce and grow, we've got to make sure that our will of man is out there good and strong. With that, I'll just open to questions.
If I may, Chairman, please. Mayor Klein, Luis Lopez, thank you for being here with us today. I have a quick question for you. I know the Senate Bill 238 has already been done and it's already in law. And the districts have been laid out. Having said that, Otero County and the city of La Jolla is going to benefit from this rail coming through and additional reverence coming through and the travelers and so forth. This would be great for that community. Does the community of Otero County and the city of La Jolla plan on possibly contributing to the taxing district once this is under fruition?
No, we're not part of the front range rail. It's like that up to a few miles on the east side of my town.
Right. But since you're going to become a beneficiary of the district, does the county of Otero wish to contribute to that taxing district? I guess what I'm trying to say is, since you're going to benefit from it and not have to put anything out.
Right, now, you know, as you say that, you know, we have 60 miles to do something with between La Jolla and Veblo just to get the same way or to get the Amtrak train up there. And so, you know, one of the things that, you know, that we should realize during the pandemic is, you know, BNSF went from one mile long trains to two mile long trains. So one of their sightings do not work, and they put Amtrak down on the side. Well, now, here we are entering the money line of BNSF, you know, because it's, the cold comes down from Wyoming, it comes down to Veblo, turns roads east through La Jolla, and then to here to Los Angeles goes down into Texas. And, you know, we know we can't go now, you know, so, you know, we know that we're going to have to come to the table to get more grants to upgrade that line. You know, so that's kind of where our efforts should be, is to widen out the loading on the sightings and stuff like that. And we have one major bridge crossing right there, West of Cal. So, you know, we got our own field to climb this one.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
So, Mr. Pace, one of the, so, Mayor, we're starting with Senate Bill 238, and then we have Senate Bill 260, that actually is the transportation bill, which we're speaking out on where TPR is getting some of the appropriations to include the 10-year plan. And with that Senate Bill 260, one of the questions that I personally asked at the end of the meeting was, can we see the appropriations from the projected enterprise zone fee that's going to be basically collected from the constituents to erect these multimodal projects throughout Colorado? And of course, I'm hoping that by Monday, we're going to have somewhat of a response to that because, you know, the promise was we'll go ahead and see if we can collect the data and send it all to the participants of the meeting.
Yeah, so there are a lot of funding streams right now for transit in the state, both state dollars and federal dollars. An email I got back from C-DOT last week gave an update on where the Transportation Commission is on multimodal centers like this. So C-DOT, this is from the email. C-DOT staff back at headquarters are currently addressing a separate question regarding funding the operations and maintenance of bus stand, outrider, and the statewide mobility hub network starting fiscal year '24. Funding proposals discussed by the STACK and the Transportation Agency in March meetings have not been decided on. Once the Transportation Commission decides, possibly this month, how to fund the bus stand and outrider network alone, all the proposed mobility hubs around the state, then headquarters staff can better nail down the transit funding amounts going forward for local agency projects, such as the Trinidad Multimodal Center. At this time, because of the uncertainty of transit funding amounts going forward, none of our transportation planning regions or MPOs have finalized their respective transit project plans. And so the, all of the, all of the TPRs have not finalized their transit plans. So the train, this is from C-DOT, so the Trinidad Multimodal Center proposal remains a proposal until the transit funding question is answered. And so we're still in the middle of the process. There's no final decisions on anything. And again, you know, so the goal is to get on a 10-year plan. And then when you're listed on a 10-year plan, open yourselves up for a lot of funding. You know, just like La Jolla did, open, you know, yourselves up for Senate Bill 260 for federal infrastructure bill language and appropriations. There is greenhouse gas rulemaking dollars to cut down on GHD pollution, greenhouse gas pollution and dollars there. And then there's other instruments such as a multimodal transportation, transportation options fund, FTA funding streams, COVID relief and infrastructure packages are all potential funding streams. The first piece is just to get on this list of priorities. Now, here's the deal, you try for the 10-year list, and if the TPR says no, then you can request to be on the long-range list.
Well, having said that, Mr. Pace, that's why the purpose of this meeting here today, so we can have some of this dialogue on these issues. Unfortunately, not this past TPR, but two months prior to that, I got a call from you the day before the TPR, and it didn't have any, anything like this or maps or anything. tangible for me to discuss with the rest of the TPR organization. So, having said that, this is really important for me to, as a commissioner, you understand, to go before a group that has to be put on the 10-year plan with nothing to present other than a thought, which more hadn't been part of the process at the time. So, thank you for clarifying that today.
Yeah, so, and so the next page, just some suggestive recommendations, and this group that we pulled together is informal groups of people who just care about Los Angeles County. You know, Los Angeles County, continue your support of Passenger Rail, it's something you guys have been strong on and good on for 15, 20 years. It'd be great if Los Angeles County supported adding a multimodal center in Trinidad. And if Mayor Rico doesn't want it at the train station, let's study it and find the right place for it. It doesn't have to be that spot. It can be any spot that the study says that it works. And then, after inclusion on a 10-year priority list, let's collaborate with CDOT, reach into transit staff, and identify state and federal planning and construction grants. Let's work in a collaborative fashion to find the right location to study it and get it done. Right, it's the time of silly money right now. You guys, some of you guys are in government, you know, 2008, 2009, when the recession hit, the government tried to fix a recession by throwing money at it, and trillions of dollars at the federal level. Again, it's happening again with COVID and with what's going on with inflation and recession. The government's trying to fix it by throwing money at it. The money's available right now, and we know in a couple of years, the silly money's going to try it out. You know, so with that, I'm done with the multimodal piece, and happy to talk about, you know, and have other folks talk about the trail piece.
Well, one comment I made, the council of governments represented, Mr. Pace, believe Walt Holden was working on that with the TPR the past few years. Who's a new director for council, but was renowned for his state of yesterday. Please reach out to Jennifer Oliver, she is the new director of that. And with the council of governments, with the transportation signings we have, the organization, I think they can work hand in hand with the city, with the county, council of governments, or a multimodal station, along with our bus systems that we have now. Because that's been in the plans for the council of governments. But again, if there's silly money out there, why not look at all aspects of it?
And also, FYI, Mr. Pace, I did ask the same thing, you know, because I know every meeting we went to, council of governments reminded the group of this multimodal appropriation. And that was my question to them last month, is what happened with the proposed, if those any, project that came forward, so. But thank you so much for being here today. And, Councilwoman, if you give me one second, Councilwoman Greco, we wanted to, for you.
I think everybody knows me. For those of you who haven't been around Trinidad for 72 years, my name is Karen Greco. I am on the city council, but more importantly, I'm here because I was on a working group for the Fisher's Peak project. So, I started right after the governor signed the paperwork for Fisher's Peak. I've been working with groups, and if you have, any of you have, you understand what I'm talking about. I don't think, and I'm not representing anybody but myself, because I have been intimately involved in this project for almost a year and a half. But I, I don't think anybody is saying that a trail, an additional trail, from Trinidad to Fisher's Peak is a bad idea. I mean, the idea's there, you got to consider it. What I'm saying only is the timing of this proposal is very premature. You know, Mr. Pace mentioned silly money, but without giving all the information out that CPW presented to us, and will be presented in the meeting of April 11th, the funding for Fisher's Peak State Park isn't complete. So, silly money, I'm sorry to Mr. Pace, but I know you've been in government, all of you gentlemen have been in government, there's no money in government called silly money. I mean, we go down to the very nitty-gritty. Without, again, saying that I'm not, I don't want to put out any more information that I'm not supposed to, but what impressed me that I didn't know until I got our final master plan project, was that 60% of Fisher's Peak is protected. And we've got to look for that. All I'm saying is, as commissioners, let's do the park right first. Alternative plans, money for alternative plans can go later, but I think it's important that all of us focus on the plan that's going to be presented and work on that. It's amazing, I don't know if any of you were on any of the working groups, were you?
On the master plan, yeah.
Okay. Then you understand the minute details these people went through for this project. I mean, it's amazing, and I think it would behoove us to let them finish this plan before we go in with another plan and add another trail. That's my five minutes of thinking.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Also, really thank you for hosting this, I really appreciate this. We keep saying over and over again, we got to do this more often, we got to do this.
Oh, definitely, you know, part of that, and I wanted, just with the passion that is in this room, we share that passion with you all.
Yes, sir.
I tell you one thing, Trinidad is my home. I can tell you a story or two of Trinidad State, that's my college, and I mentioned to Dr. Edward, my trips that I make, I'm always wearing that Trinidad State hat. And Tom Taylor, too, I get a opportunity to tell the story of the best college in the state of Colorado, 1925, and I can go into for about an hour. But the gentleman back there, and my apologies, please translate to him.
Scott Zeaches.
Okay.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager. I'm Scott Zeaches, I'm a business owner, probably geographically in the middle between what is now the new park entrance in downtown Trinidad. I think it's from my place, it's about 1.2 miles to Safeway, and probably about 1.4 miles to the front entrance. So, I would tell you that I'm here as a, as a business owner, and also a resident of the city of Trinidad. I'd like to kind of talk about things, but I want to step back even to Si Michael's pleading on this point. This gentleman here, I'm sorry, are you a consultant, lobbyist, I'm not certain, maybe all of the above?
Business.
So, as I look around the room, I'm not certain there's other business members that are here off of Main Street, Mr. and Mrs. Lopez in the back, yes, but certainly not enough. I think there needs to be more of the Chamber of Commerce represented at these meetings. There's no doubt, anybody who knows Trinidad knows this intersection and what your interests are. They're genuine. Thank you for the work that you've done in this community, although I sometimes see it biased. And I see it biased because it is very much centralized downtown. When you just step back and look, please forgive for a moment, that I'm a business owner on Santa Fe Trail. If somebody's coming from the south and they enter Colorado on I-25, if you get them off to share our two state parks that we have at exit 11, and if you let them get back on I-25, I guarantee you, you've lost 80% of them. You've lost them. They'll go all the way to Walsheimburg and get gas, and they'll keep going. If you want to keep them, please, for anybody in the room, it's a little unclear for me to understand, from the Holiday Inn Express to Saddle Road, which is the intersection where my property is, who owns that piece of real estate? Is it county, is it city? This is a rhetorical question that I put forward now. Please, come up with something that says that downtown is this way, the historical Santa Fe Trail is this way, down Santa Fe Trail. When you drive just past the Holiday Inn Express, maybe a beam where the entrance of Tower 64 RV Park, you'll see a tiny little green sign that says, "Business Loop." Please fix that, whoever has the charge and the authority to do that. Please make it something that's legible. If you want to even go a step further, great, at exit 14, when they're coming from Denver, headed south, and they get off at exit 14, and they get to that five-corner intersection, there's no signs there. Help people, unless you expect them to stop on the highway and get out there, Google, and figure out where they're going. This is what we need to do. This is the perspective of business owner, okay? Sir, if you're coming here because, and please, let's not read into what I'm going to say. If you're coming here because of the business decision-makers for the government, both at the city level and the county level are here, great, no problem. But please include the city people and more residents to these type of conversations. We'll tell you, nobody has reached out to me about this trail, except for Council Member Obeltry. She came to see me about it, right after it was decided that this was going to happen. And as I understand it, Saddle Road is kind of the dividing point between what the city has and what the county has, or it's been that access, and that is the bisection or the intersection of my property. I also understand, yes, ma'am, I'll just be right with you, Si, I also understand very recently, that somebody has an idea to extend Saddle Road to the west, all the way up to I-25 and an access road. That's interesting. Maybe the business and the, and the residential people ought to know something like this. Maybe we ought to get together and be a part of these conversations. Yes, Si?
No, Scott, first of all, I got to tell you, I really appreciate you being here today, and I, and I love your presence, too, right? And you know, the work is so hard to make your business successful, and I think the other problem existed was, I don't think there's one person here that I know of that's against Santa Fe Trail. We want it, we think it's great, as many trails as possible, we just want an additional trail to, to from downtown, but Santa Fe Trail, that's great, that's fine, there's a trail on the west side of that big land that loops into the, that loops directly into the hell, it's more exciting about that, too. We want to be known for trails. So, it's nothing against not having Santa Fe Trail, Santa Fe Trail is wonderful, it's just an additional trail.
Okay, I, I understand that, and I'll, and I'll try to clarify this a little bit a thrust. When, when there's discussions about closing Santa Fe Trail, for those that don't know, I opened my business in April of 2020, the death of COVID. Better year, the next year even bigger. On the 23rd of this month, I hit my second anniversary. I got to be doing something right. What I'm going to tell you, I sat through the 200th anniversary of the historical Santa Fe Trail, there was nothing on Santa Fe Trail, it was all downtown. Huge mess. I, I met with Commissioner Lopez, and I saw the landmark that's just adjacent or on the corner of his property. Huge mess there. Something could have been done better there. Reach out to the business owners, include us, it's easy. You're doing a great job downtown, keep doing that. Commercial, no doubt. But let's not forget all of those out on Linden, all of those out on East Main Street, because they pay taxes, because some, when they live in the city, also get to vote and participate that way. But to me, they're opinionated like I am, they're business people like I am, include them, get them on your side to help you get the decisions made that you need. Thank you all for your time. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. We have a few slides about, about the trail and the idea, and I think we and Si are going to leave on this. Possibly. So, you know, just a quick overview, the idea is to have a trail that connects to Fisher's Peak, other than just down Santa Fe Trail, so that the folks who come to visit Fisher's Peak have an opportunity to experience town as well. And I see that the, we have a number of folks from Parks and Wildlife who are on the, on the line here, and a number of senior leadership. I'll say that when Jay and Gary and the mayor and I had a call with some of these folks from Parks and Wildlife Leadership, what they suggested to us, and we'll put this in the ask here further down, they suggested the community study, survey, talk to private landowners, some prospective routes. Department of Natural Resources has a fund that we could apply for, start this process for $40,000. There's other funds in DOLA and other places for trail planning. CDOT has trail planning dollars, and start to study a prospective route. And there's a number of prospective routes. And then, then we as a community, Los Angeles County and Trinidad, come together and say, hey, this is a route that we like, and we go back to CPW and Natural Resources and say, this is a route we'd like to have access to, access to the park. And they'd be open to considering it. Obviously, they want to be a part of the process, and I know we've got the, we've got the Southeast Regional Director and the Deputy Director of Natural Resources online. If anything I said is incorrect, I'd love if I'm corrected. Otherwise, I'd love to have these guys talk about the value of exploring this. And we don't know the route right now, we just think it's something worth exploring.
Hello, everyone, my name is Lee Elliott Lopez, and I moved to Trinidad in 2018 because I fell in love with the place, and I've grown up and now I'm listening. And I want to talk on behalf of a group of people that I think a lot of people don't like right now, us transplants. You can't deny, there's been a huge influx of transplants to Trinidad and the county. I have people coming into my shop daily, we just bought property up Highway 12, we just went out this way, we're in Boncarbo now, we're in Trinidad now, we're fixing up this old house, we're doing this. There's this huge amount of people who are coming to Trinidad, and frankly, being married to a very old-school local, I hear a lot of people are afraid of this. They feel like we're changing Trinidad, we feel threatened by all of it. And I understand. People who are coming to Trinidad came here and up the road, and in Boncarbo, and all these places, because they love the air of that, and they fell in love with this place. And they have a huge amount of energy to try to help. If you went to the Trinidad Trails Alliance meeting this past month, you would have seen over 45 people. Some people in those that room, because we all had to say our name and how long we've been in Trinidad. I think the longest someone had been in Trinidad was like 35 years, but one person was five days ago that they moved here and got a house, and they're just fixing it up, and they're excited. So, what do these people want to do? They want to build trails in Trinidad for free and maintain them for free, because they want, came to Trinidad to have a healthier, like I did, a healthier lifestyle in the outdoors, because they love the outdoors. And we can either be threatened by this group of people, or you guys can change the narrative and say, welcome to Los Angeles, this is a project for you to work on together with us. Or you can feel steamed over by them and threatened. I'm sorry, a lot of these people are great people. I had a lady in my shop this week crying, literally tears crying, because she's like, I came here, I'm fixing up my house, I've sunk in my life savings, my retirement, because I want to make this place better, and I want to make this my forever home. And she felt unwelcomed. She was crying. So, why wouldn't you want to help your new property owners? People are fixing things up. That's why I want to have. That's why I want to advocate for trails. I grew up on the east coast in the city, and throughout Atlanta, where I'm from, there are trails. They took the old city trail lines, and they turned them into trails that connected the neighborhoods. And by connecting the neighborhoods, they were able to make multiple fun areas of the city. I was able to go on a trail and walk to my nephew's house, and have my nephew meet later stroller, and walk these trails, and have a safe place. I'm thinking about starting my own family here in Trinidad, and where would I take my kids to go play? I'm sure we could go down to the Boulevard Trail, but that's it. Kids get bored of one thing after another. Carlos tells me all the time how much fun it was to go play up on Reservoir Hill, or to go onto this part of town, or how he used to play up at Simpson's Rest as well. Why don't we want the kids of Trinidad to be able to have that experience that most of you have that experience growing up? And then they'll make Trinidad their home, and they're from Trinidad then. So let's try to make these things fun. Let's try to have, people are coming here. Let's try to have these trails that go out to the park. I remember going on the Appalachian Trail with my dad. That's where I grew up, my love of outdoors. And I think that Trinidad and the county would miss a huge opportunity to not be able to have and capitalize on the park, to bring people in for tourism, and then have them go home, and miss everyone around, be able to make money, and be able to keep their way of life. And that's what I want to talk about. Carlos?
Commissioners and councilmembers and people at the gallery, thank you for being here. Mr. Doran Cam, appreciate you. One of the things that, when I first got into the city's politics, was we were working on the master plan and overview, which is on one of your page litter PowerPoint. And it's been kind of reinvigorating us recently, because this was a plan that was set up by the city. Of course, this was nothing that any of the county commissioners' offices had ever been a part of. This was something the city was working on with Mr. Louis Feinberg. And as these kind of guidelines of sorts were implemented, it had hopes of going actually to the park. If you go to the next page here of the Chapter Four Master Plan with a map, there's a green line that goes actually towards Fisher's Peak. Now, at the time, that was still in private hands of Ms. Evelyn Young, and that was just not in the cards, but there were still people thinking about, hey, what happens if this ever becomes privately, oh, I'm sorry, publicly open? So there were things that were already being thought of back in 2015. Well, let's fast forward now, and here we are. We have the new park coming online, and the master plan discussions have been going on at like the community center, et cetera. And we just want to make sure that there is a portal for pedestrian or bicycle to access. Now, I respectfully disagree with the mayor when he says this is not the time to have the conversation. I feel if not now, when? If not us, who? And with the master plan's finalization, I'm not so sure this is going to be a living document. It's going to be a once-and-done until 10 or 15 years go down the road, until either more monies come along, or there's a lack of resources. And now that there are resources, I'd like to take advantage of just having a portal in the northeast half of the state park as it juts up northeast, where there's different proximal areas, either through Moore's Canyon, or by Melody Lane. There was also portals that may be accessed through easements of sorts by the gas line up on Ingleville. There's even conversations, from what I've been told with the Montoya family, about if they'd be willing to even have a discussion. And again, that's what this all is, having discussions about future vision. And I think for us to not have that discussion is fighting with one arm tied behind our back, where we're trying to get people to move from the downtown area or along Santa Fe Trail, following the 2017 comprehensive plan that the city had implemented, where that was going to be a thoroughfare for pedestrian and bicycle traffic. Yet nothing has really come to be. Now that there are opportunities and people are talking about it, why wouldn't we have these conversations in a serial, tangible manner? Because otherwise, it's never going to come to be. I just talked to Mr. Simpelman the other day, telling me how when he grew up by Eckhart, they would actually just walk up and go, and end up at Fisher's Peak. I remember stories of you, recently, when you were kids going up on Big Red Three-Wheeler, you know, and that was hopefully with permission, but you know how kids can be sometimes. And the thing about kids is, they don't have a car to get them to a portal going through that Exit 11 traffic, which, I'll be quite honest, I wouldn't want a young child traveling through there, at least right now. I mean, there's construction, and it will be a better, but still, that's a congested area, the first major portal into our state on the interstate. So having these other additional ways for people to go from various community neighborhoods up there, I think behooves us all as a community, because it does encourage a quality of life. I still believe that Trinidad is a good place for people to raise families. We just don't have that many people raising families here anymore. We have other challenges, and that's a secondary point. But this is one thing that can be an attribute for our community, to bring more people here with young families, reinvigorating our school districts, whether they're, you know, in public matters, or even our private schools too. So we have attributes and amenities that give options. So isn't that ultimately what we want for our community? We want options. So if we can move to the next slide, please. Again, we've been kind of following the 2015 Trinidad Trails and Greenways Master Plan. This is not something that is new for the people in the city. This was something that's been there since 2015. Again, it's kind of went dormant, because there were other things that were being utilized and taken care of, which were the infrastructural needs that we had, our plumbing, electrical needs that we had going on. I mean, I sit on the arboretum, and I know that we have electrical issues that we're always trying to fix, but for the quality of life for people like my wife, Lee, who have come here because they see the value of what other people who moved here. My parents came from Santa Fe, and after my dad finished law school in Denver, they were in a very similar situation. And I remember my mom telling me stories about how it was hard for her to make friends those first few years. Deana's the name of the woman who came into our store crying that day, and we gave her a hug, because she said, we are right now her only group of friends, and all we're doing is putting on hikes for people to go as a community group, helping people find their tribe. And right now, considering how divisive our country has been, it's nice to find common ground with people who are hunting, fishing, hiking, these things that we can all get behind again, say, you know what, I sure did like that Carlos. I don't know what his politics are, but I like the fact that he likes to do the same stuff as me. And that is a beautiful thing right now, which is a healing mechanism, and it's kind of a bittersweet story that this woman came in and kind of just broke down in front of us. But yet, here we are, and we're trying to advocate for people to have these amenities so they can go and do things and find their community, find their tribe of people that like to do these things, and therefore make their friends and community, and fellow friends for their children. If we can go to the next slide, please. So we have been, I'm sorry, two slides. We have been working to a small degree with Sky Tallman to help us build some actual trails and envision some mapping of the city in areas where we can access. You know, you can see on the map, you have Ingleville Trail, there's some roads up and through there. A lot of these, we're trying to utilize at most county properties, so county roads, the closest ways to get towards these areas where we can have access. I truly believe one of the best portals is going to be going up Garfield all the way into Allendale, or off of Santa Fe Trail, to where you get to that Moore's Canyon Road area, and then you can get onto Melody Lane and go back, because from what I understand, there was a parcel of land that was developed, and they have to give a portion of it towards the library. That is probably the easiest mechanism to give. But that doesn't mean that can be the only one in the future. And we can have other ways that different communities can access each other. I grew up on the other side of Reservoir Hill, and we couldn't get to Allendale or to the community center without crossing over Reservoir Hill. And that wasn't always welcome, but what we're trying to do is start with small steps, where we start another trail system like the Wormhole up on city property, where we can access it and locally do daisy chain loops that gradually get back. Because ultimately, I mean, these things are economic drivers all over the country right now. That's the main reason, well, one of them, why we got into outdoor industry. It's a booming economy, and for us to just let someone else do it, no. When we're passionate about it, why shouldn't it be us? Someone who lives here in the community, being able to provide sales tax revenue, property tax revenue, things that are going to be beneficial to work with me. So on the next page, if you would, we do actually have some other maps that have been drawn out by Sky Tallman to help us out, just as guideposts, not necessarily the end-all, be-all. But again, I think without having a conversation with CPW about just a pedestrian portal into the park on that northeast tab, then this may not ever happen. So again, I think if not now, when? If not who? Then nobody. Not us, then nobody. So I'm advocating for this. My wife and I opened a business on Main Street. It has been doing well. We're seeing our numbers grow every month. We're very excited. We brought on our first little part-time staffer, and for us, that's big, because we've been working it solely together as a mom and pop. And I feel that there's going to be more and more businesses coming here that's going to help with sales tax revenue, property tax revenue. There are less vacant buildings in downtown Trinidad and in other surrounding areas. Look at Aguilat, they're getting an ace. They've got a gas station again. People are coming. So it's not just in Trinidad where this economic growth is occurring. It's regional. Branson has a brand-new football field. They're the gem of the country last fall. On the Sunday morning news, I watched that. That was a great story for Mr. Doherty and the work that he put out there to get that accomplished. So things are happening in Los Angeles County. We're just here to advocate that if we don't get behind the bus, we want to be driving it. Or to Pope Commissioner Hassel, you're not at the table, you're on the menu. Thank you, folks.
Carlos, this is Lopez. I want you to know that indeed, we want Trinidad to thrive. And I have grandchildren in this community. I want them to have access to the things that are of the deep proportion. I think, you know, if nothing else, we all lack away today, is this conversation had to take place. We have to have the opening, as you mentioned, there are some state representatives at any point in time, anyone out there who wants to share a couple of thoughts, please unmute yourself and go on, but Mr. Feis.
Again, and if, Mr. Feinberg, if you can go to this page. Before, I think it's after, yeah. And this is some follow-up from our conversations with CBW staff. And when I type this up, I ram this language by Department of Natural Resources to confirm the accuracy of this. Colorado Parks and Wildlife is amenable to additional trail access points to Fisher's Peak State Park. They have committed to referencing alternative trail access points in their master plan, although they can't be specific points, because we haven't studied specific routes. And they told us, and Natural Resources online, we have Southeast Regional Director, it's up to us to help identify those alternative trail access points, that they're not going to tell us where to do trails outside the park. And so if we want more access points than just heading a mile south of Exit 11, then it's up to us to suggest them and working in collaboration with them. And so existing trail planning documents, which we've referenced are a good starting point, but additional work needs to be done. These are not surveyed. It's not professionally engineered. There's no specific route alignment. There hasn't been the necessary outreach to private landowners and right-of-way acquisition. All of this is going to take research and work. And so the suggestion here as far as next steps, Los Angeles County's been such a leader of Fisher's Peak from the very beginning. It was critical to have Los Angeles County's participation, because we're taking private land off of the tax rolls and putting it into public holding. So Los Angeles County's been hand in glove from the very beginning. But we want Los Angeles County to take a position in support of exploring additional trail access points of Fisher's Peak from downtown. The second bullet point was something we put in our letter, but we've already received verbal commitment, reference of additional trail access points in CPW's master plan for Fisher's Peak. And they said, we will reference the potential additional access points. So the next step is really in our hands. Conduct an in-depth study of alternative trail access points of Fisher's Peak State Park from town. Potential funding sources included CPW Trails Program, CDO's Transportation Alternative Program, and DOLA Planning Grants. If the city and county were amenable to this, there are people in the room who would help apply for all of these grants. It's a matter of the city and county saying, hey, yes, this is something we're interested in studying. And then if we're successful in receiving these study grants, then apply to state and federal funding to plan and build out local trail connections to Fisher's Peak, and even potentially working with Trinidad State College Trails Program, which I think is going to draw a bunch of new students, hopefully, some refurbished dorms at Trinidad State College. And so the next step is to really do a collaborative studying process of looking at it. Now, we have some other slides on transportation. I don't know how we're dealing with time, if we want to stop here, or if we want to not go out and have transportation. Yeah, we'll leave it up to you. I think, you know, for us, as county...
Get us all in the same room, it doesn't have to be office.
Well, there's folks saying they look interested in speaking at this point, so I'll... Yes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor, Councilmembers, and community members. My name is Rhonda Epper, and I am the President of Trinidad State College. I here simply and purely as an advocate for our students. And as you may know, we are running low on students right now. We have lost about 12% of our student enrollments since 2019, for a lot of complicated reasons, not the least of which has been COVID. We've actually lost about 26% of our enrollment over the last decade. So when I came to this position about three years ago, one of my goals was to try to build back enrollment losses that we've experienced over the past decade. I had no idea we were going to run up against a global pandemic and experience yet further losses, but we really have to look at what our options are right now, moving forward for how we can start to build back enrollment. And I think being where we are in this part of the state that has these tremendous outdoor recreational resources should be a great way to attract students. So we've been working on putting programs together that take advantage of the outdoors, such as trail building. We have one in the works for outdoor recreation. We have a business degree plan that will have an entrepreneurial focus to build the outdoor economy. We have a relationship that we're developing with CSU Pueblo that will be a transfer agreement in wildlife and natural resources. All of these are wonderful opportunities that rely upon a close connection between Trinidad State College and these outdoor resources, including the community in which we live, in Los Angeles County and in the city of Trinidad. I can tell you that it is also a struggle for our students today to experience these outdoor amenities because of the kind of confined space where we are in Trinidad. There aren't great connection points to the city. And so for us to be able to provide extracurricular activities other than athletics, so we have 11 athletic teams, as you know, and they have a lot to do because they're playing their sports, but that's not the majority of our students. That's about 200 students on the Trinidad campus. We have at any given time, six to 700 students on our campus, and we really don't have a lot to offer other students who are involved in athletics. I think that offering them the chance to connect into the city of Trinidad and the amenities in the outdoors, such as trail systems and a trail to Fisher's Peak, would be a great way to get our students more involved and to provide those healthy outdoor extracurricular opportunities. And I can tell you that even within our sports teams, and we hosted our award-winning Region Nine Champion Basketball Team at the President's Home last week for dinner, and I was talking to them about how they enjoyed their experience in Trinidad, and whether they... to them about how they enjoyed their experience in Trinidad and whether they've been to Fisher's Peak, whether they have experienced Monument Lake, Highway 12, any of the other outdoor experiences, and most of them have not. They don't necessarily feel welcome in the community, and there really aren't easy access points to get them into Trinidad and to get them out to these locations. So I think a trail access point from the college, better access into the city where they aren't going to cross over these viaducts that it's sort of confusing of where to go. And just better ways for the community to make our students and our athletes feel welcome, I think would be go a long ways toward helping us attract more students and strengthen our college and build back our enrollments. So thank you very much for allowing me to talk.
Thank you.
I'll run through this really quick here. There is a really fabulous study going on right now between, with CDO and Trinidad's partnership looking at traffic issues in Trinidad. Actually, tomorrow, there's going to be an open house to share some of the findings. And it's been really well done. And if I can just flip through this really quick here. My, and Mr. Darkcap, we can go to the next slide if you don't mind. And we really appreciate it. Trinidad and Los Angeles County are affected by state highway designs, decisions that were made decades ago that have divided the community and created obstacles to mobility, exposed to safety risks, and stifled economic growth. The sheer number of, if you look at the viaducts, if you look at Highway 12 going through residential communities, we can skip ahead, one, two, three. Let's go to this slide with the text. The excellent traffic study has jointly identified about 125 million in traffic needs for the community to address problems created by past CDO and US DOT officials. And these aren't just city roads, but also some county roads as well. The CDO portion goes all the way down to the state line. CDO Region 2 has identified five million over the next 10 years to address these egregious harms the prior CDO administrations have, that should be a "have" caused. This is definitely appreciated, but definitely not enough. And we in Southern Colorado, we're not asking for anything special. We're simply asking for fixes to the problems caused by previous administrations. If you look at this particular federal reconnecting communities grant to establish a program to improve community connectivity at identifying, removing, mitigating infrastructural barriers that create obstacles to mobility or economic development, or expose the community to pollution and other health and safety risks for other purposes. This was funded in the infrastructure package, I believe, with $4 billion nationally. And there's no community, I think, that can demonstrate designs, past designs that were done in a way to harm a community than this community. When you look at the viaducts, you look at Highway 60 East and Highway 12 going west on past residential communities. And I think it's clear that state highway designs and decisions made decades ago have divided our community, created obstacles to mobility, exposed to safety risks, and stifled economic growth, the criteria for those federal grant dollars. And I believe that the state and feds owe this community and all similar communities across Colorado a fix. And that should be demanded from the state and feds. And if they can't or they won't assist, I think there should be legislation run in 2023 at the state Capitol to create a new fund to reconnect Colorado's communities affected by past highway authorities, sort of a mirror program to the federal program, something where we can go and generate $25, $50 million a year specifically for communities like Los Angeles County that have been impacted and help start to make the changes necessary to address the $125 billion backlog identified in that traffic study. There's not a felony in Region 2 for it, so I think the state should be obligated to cover it. So just my thoughts on the transportation.
That's an interesting point.
I think we've been harmed, and there's an obligation for fixes.
You know, the opportunity that I told you, the fact is, it would have to be city-specific. That legislation would have to be Trinidad, Los Angeles County-specific. Otherwise, you have the appropriation, if indeed that legislation were to pass, to be divided amongst other cities that would feel pretty much the same. But I really appreciate your perspective, and that's a really good point you have in the state legislature. I think you would know the incidence of those corridors better than we do, and certainly it would be something that may be worth extrapolating on, Commissioner Tony Hasse.
Yeah. Chair Famine, can we go back to this slide right here? And down here, where it talks about to determine the best routes and survey where professional engineering route lie, and of course, these aren't modern route.
No, they're not.
Good, because I was hoping that the outreach to private landowners would be up there toward the top, and you know about private rights activist, and you were too in the day, that helped me out, and I appreciate that. I think the thing that's pertinent is to reach out to them before you start this process, so they don't feel like you're shoving them into a situation where they don't have a way out. Please reach out to them personally. Do you know that? Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Hasse. And I, you know, I feel like in order for this process to work the way it should, it should really be led by city and county or city or county. And I think those of us in the room, I think we'd be, we'd want to assist in your leadership and help go after some of these grant dollars for this process. You know, as we looked at previous sort of trail maps, there's multiple sort of proposals for getting up to Fisher's Peak. And there might be one where the landowner says, not a dead body. And so that means you got to go look at another route. And that's the reason to go and study it. And I think it's critically important to reach out to the landowners. I think there might be some landowners who see it as an opportunity, and others who see it as a burden. And I think finding the right path is critically important.
And CPW should be right up there at the top, too, because from what I, my understanding, sitting on that master plan committee, there's endangered species that they don't want to... So we sure want to navigate around those areas, and so they would probably give you a better point of entry, and then you would go to the landowners, and then the rest of this would follow after.
Thanks.
Sounds great.
As soon as I've been, as soon as you're listening, I can clarify a couple of things. First of all, I want the audience here to understand, I am not against any of this. I'm just saying that there is a awkward time. And as far as somebody that has been advocating for Trinidad for the past six years, when I became mayor, that was one of my purposes, that was one of the reasons why I ran for mayor, is to go up to Denver, to raise our hand and say, Trinidad is still here. Please recognize us. Along with you guys as Commissioners, you've done the same thing. I've had a couple of other city councils, people that have bonded with me as well, to raise our hand, to meet other state legislators. So I am not against any of this. Just let you know. And one thing I want to mention is that what I said earlier about that meeting with TPR and the multi-mode, and the trail to Fisher's Peak, I'm just passing on what I have been informed about from the meetings that we've had with the Colorado Parks and Wildlife, as well as the meeting that was having with the TPR, the Public League. So I'm just passing on that information, what I've been told. We're willing to look at other options, and those options will be looked at. It's not, like Ms. Lopez was saying, this is not a one-and-done. Matter of fact, I think that, I think somebody is on from CPW. When we met at that meeting, I think a few weeks back, South, about, we mentioned, it was not a one-and-done. You know, the master plan is a plan. It's a living document. We realize it's going to take eight to 10 years by the time this process all plays out. There's going to be some changes that go along. There's been a talk about going out and getting more money for trying to get a trail to the peak. We have right now a fund between the county, the city, the Trust for Public and Strategic Concerns. There's $300,000 right now, the fund that we have in place right now. And what will happen with that is when this master plan is released, and we know what all this, everybody's in for, then we can bring together this group again and sit down and say, okay, how do we, with CPW say, okay, how do we go from here to identify, if we can identify, a trail to the peak at some point in time? And like you said, which was a minute ago, that what they put in the master plan, that there will be, that would be put in the master plan that there is that potential of trails to the peak. We know that for a fact, because that would relate to us in that meeting. So what I'm advocating as well as, you know, something that we get advocated about in the city is, we hear sometimes some of the things that you guys are doing after the fact, we should be the first ones. Whenever you guys want to go to the state and say, we're going to approach the state, call me, call Mr. Valentine, and say, this is our proposal, we're going to take this to the state. What do you think? Are you humbled or are you not humbled of this? Please let us know ahead of time, and we would like you to have that information ahead of time. Getting back to the multi-mode project, like I said, you know, we're looking at other options, and there's an option that Mr. Valentine and I have on that we're thinking about, and we will bring that forward. As a matter of fact, when I pitched that multi-mode project at the TPR meeting, I had called Mr. Gabelson a few days before and asked him, give me the cost of what it costs per square foot to build a commercial building at this point in time. He said it was anywhere between $500 and $700 per square foot. So if you take, you know, that $500 to $700 per square foot, this building that we're hoping that maybe we could build at some point in time, at about 1,800 square feet, it's $13 million in today's dollars. And I think that's one of the things, I kind of maybe throw back a little bit, because I said, that's, and I said, it'd be $13 million to $15 million with accelerated costs in the road going down, you know, in a couple of years. That's where it could even be greater than that. It's like, I mean, I just, I really want to let you guys know that I did pitch this, and if anybody has been a cheerleader for Trinidad, has been beaten. Mr. Pace would also say the same thing, because he and I sit on the Southwest Chief Amtrak Commission. I have pushed, and I've pushed, and I've pushed several meetings to identify Trinidad in the soundtrack, Southwest Chief, and how the new rail district is going to move in this direction down the road. So I have been a very big advocate in that regard. You know, and as far as new residents in the community, if anybody's really pushing for new residents, it's me. And I'll tell you why. Last year, there was a meeting that I went to, and it was an Action 22 meeting. And there was a gentleman there from the state office about Broadhead. Kind of lit up the lightbulb, so we started talking to him. We talked to another gentleman later on, it was last fall. And the whole idea behind this is that I recognized that if we're going to increase the population of this community, we've got to give better access to residents and people that are moving into this community. This is the future. People today, one in seven people are working from home today. In the near future, they're saying that 60% of the people are the one, they want, 60% of people want to work from home. That is what I heard in a couple of recent meetings. So that tells me that Broadhead is going to be a big thing for our community, and I recognized that from that initial meeting, and I will push for that. There's a meeting coming up in the near future about Broadhead in Walsburg. We will attend that. We will continue to push for that, because I believe that that is the future. That is the cock in the wheel that we have today, that we're going to have here in the near future. So I think that we need to really try to get that in place so that those people that want to leave Denver, which a lot of them are wanting to do, and others parts of the country, to have a quality of life, they want to move to here rural areas. And that's what I think that this Broadhead will, what that Broadhead will do for us. And like I said, it's not a matter of not now or then. I'm saying that beginning next Monday will be the beginning of this process. That is when the master plan will come out. At that point, then we can engage the new authority of CPW to start talking about trails. So I think that's really important. Like I said, it's right at our doorstep. So let's all work together. I'm willing to work with anybody and everybody, because I want to push for Trinidad. I believe that Trinidad will see better days in the near future. And I think working all together, I think we can get there. And we all need to collaborate. We all need to be important. We all need to let each other have each other to do to get to this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Rico. One takeaway for us, we've got some next steps, more communication, obviously. And we have the city and the county absolutely correct, Mr. Pace. I spent a lot of time in Denver. I can tell you that, advocating for the San Luis County, speaking on behalf of what is that's happening here. And I also see them on a media at international level. So Los Angeles County is not forgotten, but we need to, at the local level, not forget that the process begins right here. So my closing comments, and then I'll pass it on to my fellow county commissioners, is I want to thank you all for coming, and remember, these are your chambers. We're open for business. We're here for you. We appreciate this feedback more than you can ever imagine. And my message to you, Ms. Lopez, I came to Trinidad many years ago. Your husband, I remember him because I met the family when I came to Trinidad. I won't tell you stories about him, but certainly, I'm really okay. But one of the things that we have to remember is that we are nomads in this world, and the opportunity, as we migrate from place to place, we have a responsibility to one another, to lift one another up. And I tell you one thing, I speak on this particular city that has given me so much opportunity. So thank you for what you're doing, and I want to say thank you to all of you. Come back, and I know the mayor and council and us, we're going to continue to work together and continue to be the ambassadors for not only the city of Trinidad, for this wonderful county, and for the state of Colorado. So thank you all. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Chairman. Sometimes this job as county commissioner is very difficult. This particular work session has been very enlightening for me, and it makes me love this job even more. We're able to represent everybody here, and in doing so, we have an opportunity, but a responsibility as well. There's so many different projects that can be done, especially what we discussed here today. So I'm proud and a great thing to be a part of. The YABBA, Mr. Doherty, Council's famous YABBA to that. It's some of the process that we have to go through as a community to get to that point. Commissioner Hasse, very, I'll go and put that, talking to the landowners, the property owners, gaining easement, paying for it, the dollars, that's a big part. The folks that have lived here forever, that are not moving, what are their wishes? Do they want a trail in their backyard? Do they want people going through their small alleyway or their small street to get to a new trailhead? What's their position? I've heard a lot of sales pitches today. I'm a salesman, so I appreciate it. We've sold five valu measures in six years here in Los Angeles County, and so this is one of the people we have in the room, and our staff. So it's not impossible, these things that we're talking about today. I think that we get a lot of processes that has to be done, such as the NEVA study, finding out what the little bugs and the mice and everything else that needs to go through, how it's going to impact. CPW does a great job of making sure that all of these processes take place to protect the land, the traffic. The traffic study is being worked on. Eminent domain, that's something that I'm not a fan of whatsoever. However, I do understand that sometimes it needs to assist in these types of projects if they're properly compensated accordingly for their, the loss of tax revenue. What's it going to cost the county? And the process for the county, if we own any of the property, it's got to go out to an auction for the folks. We had some discrepancies or some discussion regarding a building that the county owned, gave it back to the veterans, and there were some people that were upset with that. However, it belonged to the veterans to begin with. If we were to do a different type of system of owner, transfer of ownership of county property, you'd have to go out to the property bid auction type of system. The city of Trinidad has a similar function, I believe, if you have to go to the vote of the people. Or they can give to Tatura, which I sit on that board with your husband, Mr. Rego. He does a great job as chairman there. So some of those types of things, but speaking with the residents is the first, first, first big thing. And for the city of Trinidad, Carlos mentioned earlier, projects that started years ago. I know it's difficult because of order three changes, order seven changes all the time, and new projects come up for your city managers and all your staff. And the next thing you know, we forgot about this project, and we're doing this now. Well, let's finish what we start. Those are the types of things that I think that Mayor Rico was trying to hit on, that it's not maybe the right time, but we've got other things to do right now. But it doesn't mean that we can't look at it. So those are my viewpoints of this. Again, I'm very excited. I enjoy hearing the dialogue from each of you today in your time. But please keep in mind that elected officials are exactly that. We're elected officials to represent the people that elected us to sit in office, not private businesses and private businesses only. I'm a private business owner. A trail right up to my store, that'd be great, but how much beer can you put on a bicycle? So these are types of things. And Mr. Zeke's made mention earlier, too, about trail systems on Santa Fe Trail or expanding that to the 10-foot right away, that's going to happen. When that happens, I wasn't contacted either by anybody from the city. Well, when there's construction, we have downtime and lost revenue of business owners, too. So I think that communication needs to really be put in place before any of this type of trail system moves forward with the business owners, residents. And heck, maybe even a ballot measure might be the way to go with this. Talk to the people, the communities, and see what they say. But let's put it in the community's hands, not just a group of 10 or 15 envisioners that are trying to do so. So thank you all for your time today and for putting up with me and listening to me. Thank you.
Commissioner Haas? Thank you all for being here. It's been very lucky. There was a lot of confusion on the different projects that were going on and which ones were inclusive and maybe overlapped some. And four words that I hate more than anything, "for the greater good." I don't know how many times I've heard that, and it's, oh, you know what I'm talking about. I don't believe in eminent domain. And I really want us to be inclusive of those landowners as we plan this project. They need to be notified in the beginning so that they're not caught off guard like we were in the past. And I can't say that and be more passionate about it. To me, that's most important, because they need to be aware of what's coming down. Hey, I'm all for another trail, if that's what it needs to be. But the proper procedure is foremost. So thank you for being here.
I think we got the recipe to make sausage. And you know how messy it can get, but I know once you have an athlete, it's fantastically delicious. So thank you all. Any other comments? Anyone online? Mr. Lopez?
I just want to say, I understand where you go all over your seats and being in former elected position. It's nice when people come with challenges, with solutions versus just, you guys need to do something about this, and what are you supposed to do? I don't know. It's your job. So I hope that we are able to help give you some guidance in what we're hoping for, because it stinks when people come with problems and they just want you to do something about it.
And I think all of you have been very well in giving us some guidance. And I know we'll follow up with our city partners, and we'll begin the conversation. So if you know the conversation, know the comments, and the discussion, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Salute. Second motion.
Commissioner Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruiz, something?
Yes.
Commissioner Keith, something?
Yes.